Once again, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to Village of Bartlett Committee of the Hall Meeting for February 6, 2024. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to, again, please call the roll.
Justy Dany, Ganzie, here, Benstein, here, Hopkins, here, Fort, here, Swansky, here, President Wallace.
Here. We'll start this meeting off with a town hall. If anyone would like to address the committee or any items on the committee, please step up to the podium, state your name and address to the record, and try to keep your comments to three minutes. Does anyone like to address the committee at this time? Does anyone online like to address the committee of the hall?
No, Mayor.
All right. We'll move on to standing committee reports, starting out with Community and Economic Development Committee Chairman Ganzie.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one item, Strategic Plan Update. It's attached as a staff memo and a copy of the proposed updated strategic plan for 2024 to 2027. This memo provides a brief overview of the updated strategic plan for the village incorporating input from the village board and department heads. The full plan is attached for detailed insights into short-term and long-term priorities, including communication strategies, business development initiatives, and infrastructure projects. I'll turn it over to staff to go through that for us.
Yeah, this evening is a brand-new strategic plan for two reasons. One, because of all the goals that you've accomplished in the previous plan, and two is because the timeframe of the plan is one to three years and three to five. So you'll see that same format throughout the strategic plan, short-term and long-term, routine and complex. And this plan includes a lot of the common themes that you've seen in other plans, such as infrastructure, efficiency, safety, business retention, recruitment, and things of that nature throughout the plan. Also included below some of those plans are bullet points that are, in addition to the overall theme of the plan. And within that is also departmental responsibilities. You'll see that in green below each plan. And if you've got any further questions, we're happy to answer them.
Sure. Looking over the plan, I know with the goal setting, for instance, increase Bartlett Hill's social media presence. Guess what I would like to see? Like, what does increase mean? What does increase online marketing? I feel like we need to add either a percentage and then why? Like, I know it says increase residents' awareness. How are we going to measure that we did increase their awareness?
Sure. Ever since we started our social media platforms, we've been keeping track of numbers. Actually, one of those is within the activity measures that you're about to see in the budget presentation in March. But that, what you're saying there was also discussed with A5, and that's going to become part of their rollout as well. So those types of facts and figures that you discussed just now will be a part of that process as well.
So we're going to list it out somewhere so we can benchmark ourselves to where we're at?
In addition, we've revised the executive summaries that you get to include activity measures and connection to the strategic plan goals specifically, so that you'll be able to monitor each of those goal, each of activities that the board, that is brought before the board and how it fits into the plan, and the activity measures associated with it.
Okay, thank you. And that'll be, like, included somewhere online to view, like a dashboard, kind of measuring where we're at?
I think in terms of those medias, in terms of those numbers for the social media, we could...
I'm not talking about every, like, I feel like every goal on here with, like, the word increase or enhance?
We did look at some dashboard programs. They were pretty expensive. We were not really comfortable with the price of those. So we're going to work with GIS to build our own. So I don't have something to show you right now, but I don't think it'll be too difficult to put together. We have looked at some in other communities, but we want to do that in-house because we think out of house is too expensive.
Okay.
And the longer we go with GO-GOV, some of that's happening organically with that system. So we'll continue to harness that platform as well.
One of the things regarding the golf course, I agree with Trusty Ganzie trying to measure it, but we had talked about the, our branding being incorporated into our golf course, our branding campaign. And I just wanted to make sure we're not looking past that, because I didn't see that actually in here. I saw a new website. I just wanted to make sure that that was part of that.
We met with A5 last Friday, and they showed us some of the overall concepts. At the February 20th Committee of the Hall, they will unveil those concepts to you for your input. And we did discuss with them, including highlighting the golf course and also that connection to the entire community.
Any other comments?
All right. Well, then we will, I guess we'll continue the strategic plan later times.
I would just reiterate Trusty Ganzie's point on things that are fluffy. That's how I usually relate to them. They're fluffy and specific strategic goals, and they shouldn't... I know they have to be fluffy on here because it's just bullet points, but it's specifically when we get to the nuts and bolts of it all.
Specific measurable.
Yep, specific measurables around each one of these strategic goals would help all of us to understand how we're proceeding to the end goal. So, anything else?
The more knowledge, the better. More data.
Thank you, Chairman Ganzie. License and Ordinance Committee Chairman Hopkins.
Thank you, President Wallace. We have one item on our agenda, and that's regulating unscheduled bus drop-offs. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Kurt, our village attorney, to explain how we got here, the reason for drafting this, and give us his legal opinion.
Certainly. As the board's probably aware, there's been a lot of issues in the suburban communities lately with unscheduled drop-ups of, unfortunately, migrants who are coming from the south, now that the landing zone in Chicago has been full and Chicago's taken a harder stance. Several suburban communities have adopted ordinance essentially prohibiting these bus drop-offs. They seem to occur around metro stations, and they're, these individuals are dropped off so that they can be bussed into the city and reach the landing zone in the city of Chicago. Several different types of ordinances have been adopted by communities. Some, you know, have an outright ban. Some have an approval process. Some communities have decided not to take any action and just kind of wait and see and have more of an administrative plan in place on how to respond if we do have a drop-off. I believe we already have a plan in place for how we would handle one of these if it does happen in Bartlett. We did prepare a draft ordinance with what we think is the most defensible option. If the board wants to adopt an ordinance prohibiting these types of unscheduled bus drop-offs, there's no obligation, there's no necessity from a legal perspective. It's entirely a policy decision up to the village board. But we wanted to at least have a draft ordinance for the board to consider if the board did think that this was something they wanted to pursue. The draft ordinance that we put together is a pre-approval process so that a bus just can't show up unannounced and unload a bus of individuals and without anything set up for how they're going to get to the city of Chicago. So it requires somebody to apply for pre-approval, and if they drop off without that approval, then we can cite them. There isn't really anything much we can do besides issuing them a ticket. So if there's any questions about the specifics of the draft ordinance and how that works, I'm certainly happy to ask or to answer any questions on that. It's really more of a question if the board wants to pursue any of these regulations or not.
As far as municipalities or cities that have adopted this, are they using any legal resources or any dollars to defend it?
So the city of Chicago adopted an ordinance that's somewhat similar to this, where they have a prohibition on unscheduled drop-offs, in that they have to get pre-approval to drop off a load of passengers. That ordinance is now challenged. There is a lawsuit pending. The bus company is claiming that prohibiting these drop-offs violates the Commerce Clause and Equal Protection Clause of the United States Constitution. So these types of ordinances are still new. It's obviously a new issue that everybody's grappling with. How far municipalities can go to regulate them is still somewhat of an open question, given that there is this lawsuit involving the city of Chicago.
How long do you think that is going to take to get resolved?
It's hard to predict how long litigation can take, depending on the type of case and how fast it can move. I mean, sometimes a year, two years.
So there, Chicago, though, is that lawsuit because they're prohibiting people from dropping off or prohibiting from dropping off after certain time periods?
So they have a pre-approval process that's somewhat similar to this, and that's being challenged altogether. They're saying that you can't treat our drop-offs differently than any other type of, you know, passenger service coming into the city.
So, for the sake of clarification, a scheduled versus an unscheduled drop-off is? Who schedules? Is that our decision whether it's scheduled or not?
So the way that we've defined it is that it has to be a published schedule so that everybody can look at it. So the classic example would be a Metro schedule, or a Greyhound schedule, or a PACE schedule that says, this is when this bus is going to be here, and this is when that bus is going to be here. So that way, there's some expectation of, we know there's going to be people around here. We're going to have resources in place. We know what to expect, not to have somebody dropping off in the middle of the night without any resources.
Greyhound doesn't drop here.
Certainly.
Greyhound drops in Elgin, correct?
Yeah.
And Chicago, but they're not dropping here, generally speaking, before this issue. Is that be correct?
Yes.
So this is something over and above that the different municipalities are having to deal with?
Yes.
And we do not have the resources for this?
No.
Are they classifying this as mass transit? I mean, are we...
Not necessarily. We define this as like an inner-city bus, meaning any bus service that's originating from outside of the village with 10 or more passengers.
Which is scheduled, which is always scheduled.
Yeah. If that's scheduled, then that's okay. That's permitted here.
So when the bus drops off in Bartlett, and 50, 60 passengers get out, what's to say they are all getting on the train, and how are they getting on the train? What's the financial means to get on the train?
That's something that we really can't control. And that's one of the drawbacks of this. It's obviously a tough situation, and most municipalities, all municipalities, don't have a lot of the same tool, the necessary tools to deal with those more logistical issues. What we can regulate is where buses can be dropped off and how that process works.
So what happened was when Chicago instituted this ordinance, that's when these buses started going to the collar metro stations from Cary to Elburn, and the easiest point of exiting or drop-off. So as more and more of these municipalities start instituting this, lack of all opportunities to drop off, but they're going to challenge more of them.
That's very possible, yes.
Let me ask. So let's say hypothetically, we establish an ordinance against this, and they're fined, you know, and it's a drop-off. The bus is gone. How are we going, if we did find them, how are we, I think we're spinning our wheels. They can just tell us, we're not paying it, you know, sue me, you know, I'm not paying it, and I'm...
We could certainly issue a ticket and take them into adjudication, but collecting on it could be challenging in some instances.
It would be, yeah.
How does that affect, if you know, if a bus company that was hired by a certain, by an NGO is dropping off unscheduled, making unscheduled drops in various municipalities in Chicago, and let's just say it's ABC Bus Company hired by ABC NGO, at what point do citations that were issued affect that bus company's standing? Does it at all? I mean, are those, is there a paper trail that, well, this bus company has X amount of unpaid citations out there across the country?
Yeah, I mean, you could certainly try and collect on them as much as you can.
Is there a trail? I mean, like, is there a record? Like, if you, if you're, if you're an over-the-road trucker, safer keeps track of all of your citations, right? Is there a...
Oh, is there like a central database for municipal citations? That I'm not aware of. I think that, I mean, obviously, any citation we issue would be a public record, so it would be easy to, for somebody to obtain. But I'm not aware of any central system, ordinance violations like that.
Paula, have we had any issues thus far, or any of our surrounding neighbors had any issues at their metro stations or drop-offs?
We have had one drop-off on Christmas Eve, if you remember. Those folks got off the bus, got onto the train, and headed to Chicago. We opened the train station for them. The police department responded. We opened the train station so that they could use the bathroom, and then they, I think they arrived just like 15 minutes before the train was to head to Chicago. So they were not in town very long. Our neighbors, it varies. So in DuPage County, there's been quite a few, but it's been a little random in terms of which stations they go to. There's no real pattern. I will tell you, some of our neighbors in DuPage County, they have construction around their train stations, so they haven't been visited. But places like Naperville, where they have three stations, they have had more drop-offs than, Elmhurst has had more drop-offs. So some communities have had more than others. A few months ago, when we were talking about this in a manager's meeting, Hanover Park had not had a drop-off. So that's not to say that they won't, or they haven't had it since that conversation, but there's no real pattern.
So I know Elburn had 11, as of last two weeks ago. They had 11 drop-offs just this year, or within the last month or so. A question for Chief, during that drop-off on New Year's Eve, obviously, you guys weren't, or Christmas Eve, you guys weren't made aware of that, correct, prior?
Yeah, that is correct. They didn't give us a prior notification that they were here. I believe we learned about it from either another commuter or one of our residents. As Paula mentioned, we went over there. They had a sponsor on their bus that provided them with paid tickets to use the Metro Train. So the only thing we really did was facilitate, as Paula mentioned, is opening up the Metro Station, so in case they needed to keep warm or in case they had to use the facilities. And then, as Paula mentioned, within 15 minutes, all of them got on the train.
That said, it's definitely easier to manage our police force if we do have advanced knowledge of them or schedule going, you know, down the line if this starts to creep up more consistently.
We're prepared whichever direction the board wants to go. If we go the direction where it's scheduled, you know, there's so many different bus companies coming out of Texas that there's no guarantee that they would notify us. But whether they do or not, it's not really a burden on our police department because literally, at least at this time, we're just opening up the Metro Station just so they can use the facilities, stuff like that. Now, where it would become a burden is if they weren't provided the prepaid tickets to get on the Metro Train, just trying to find the resources, our community partners, to get them those train tickets to get on there.
How do we find out who's paying for these buses?
The one concern...
NGOs are paying for them.
The one concern that...
You asked a question, right?
Yeah, the one...
Great. She asked a question.
Oh, I thought it was answered.
No.
I'm just, I'm curious how we get this messaging and enforce this.
Some police departments, you know, have interviews of the people on the bus. They ask, you know, where'd you come from? How'd you get here? You know, who's providing your ticket? Some of the reporting requirements require that, that there is someone on the bus who is a liaison. That is, you know, that information is not provided to us ahead of time. You know...
Would that be something we ask?
It's done...
Who's paying for it?
An interview. It's asked, you know, at the station on the bus. I don't know, I don't know if we could compel them, Kurt, to...
Yeah, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have any real legal basis to force them to say who's paying for the tickets.
Would they, would they know?
They might not know, and...
They don't even know. Somebody handed them the ticket.
I think from, unfortunately, from our perspective, if we're trying to control what happens after they land, we might not be able to work that into the ordinance because how they got in and who's paying for that. We would certainly be able to take it to the bus company, but I don't know how we'd be able to get to who's chartering the bus company. That might be beyond our purview.
Why would that be?
Our...
Certainly find out what NGO is footing the bill to ship them everywhere.
We could.
Probably half a dozen of them down in Texas, non-governmental organizations that are probably doing that. And if we were going to address something to be sure that we had forewarning that anything that was coming our way, you would think you would want to get our ordinance drafted to cite the NGO versus NGO and the bus company.
So we, the mayor is basically saying what I wanted to say earlier. There doesn't seem to be, there doesn't seem to be a concern at this time. But if it gets to the point that we do have a situation, I think that maybe we should take a look at this and put something into place at this point in time and not wait until, you know, we're pushed into it. So...
I'd like to see something that addresses the safety of the Bartlett residents and the Bartlett police. We're assuming it's going to be a mom, dad, and kid getting off the bus. What if it's a 35-year-old, military-trained illegal alien? And there's 50 of them. We saw what young students or kids, teenagers, young adults were doing to the city of Chicago three years ago with the rioting and the vandalism and the damage. My business was damaged several times during the Summer of Love. And so I would also like a worst-case scenario looked at as well. So for, you know, if it's mom, dad, child, yes, hopefully there's no, there's no incidences. But what if it's 50, 35-year-old men that are military-trained that are getting off the bus in Bartlett? I'm concerned about my daughters. I'm concerned about my wife. I'm concerned about our businesses. And again, it might be an extreme case, but I think we should be aware of that as well. And I don't want to see our police officers getting injured either.
Well, I don't think you have to go back three years. I think you just have to go back a week ago in New York City.
Yeah, yep.
Trusty LaPorte's point, what could we do if something like that happened?
I think you're talking about a riot situation.
Well, they're dropping 50 people off, potentially more, you know, unannounced.
There's been a lot of these drop-offs throughout the, you know, Chicago suburbs, and there has been no situations that we're aware of so far, just like anywhere that would happen in Bartlett. We have policies and procedures, and we have mutual aid policies with local jurisdictions, and then we have alias call-outs and NIPIS call-outs where we can get multiple officers here in a very timely fashion if that would ever come to be. But from what we're seeing from speaking to our community police departments and what Paul has said from her groups, most of these people just come on over here, and then they get on the train without causing any type of issue whatsoever.
I understand that, but the point remains is the potential exists that this could occur. And I would like to see something in place before, you know, it's, before we have to deal with the situation, before it's too late, so to speak. I'd like to see something in place at this point in time so we have some direction. We know exactly specifically what we, what we need to do.
Does our village manager and our village attorney recommend that we put something in place ahead of time?
Good question.
It's really a policy decision for the board, at least from a legal perspective. Again, there's several, many communities that are deciding to just adopt an action plan for how they respond without an ordinance. Other communities have decided that they want to put an ordinance in place. So that decision is really a policy decision for the board.
I just, I think what is before you is appropriate for what we're experiencing, for what we have experienced. I would just not want to be the last community on the train line that doesn't have an ordinance.
Yeah.
So to your point, I think proactive is better than reactive. I think it is a measured step that we're taking, and it's an appropriate one. I will also tell you that some of, some municipalities are sending copies of their ordinances to the state of Texas so that they can disseminate that, and they have been, they've had some success. So it takes a little more of a proactive approach where the bus companies are hesitant to come to a community that has a structure in place when they can go just down the road to somebody who doesn't.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. I would like to see a little more teeth in this, adding the state of Texas as a part of this ordinance, saying, you know, we're going to hold you responsible. The NGOs, if we can ever track them down, we're going to hold you responsible, and send that down and say, hey, you know...
See how far we can take it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Would it be stronger if we had an alliance with the neighboring communities, Streamwood or, sorry, Hanover Park and Roselle, where the ordinances lined up a little bit? Just took it a, an approach kind of like we're doing for the train merger?
We had kind of talked about that with the conferences, and each community is very distinct on where they land on this. And so I think getting an overall blanket kind of joint resolution or ordinance, I think, might be a big stretch.
Can we hear about what some of the other neighboring communities are putting together?
Oh, yeah.
We have. We have studied them.
We've had some, the conference has been really great at putting those databases together for us.
And then how about with the conferences? Are they putting pressure in other areas, like working with, you know, senators and other legislators?
I believe they are, both conferences are part of the working group through the Mayor's Caucus, and that has direct pipeline to our representatives, as well as the city of Chicago and the Cook County boards.
Just one last point. Under our, under Trusty LaPorte and Swansky's questioning of, you know, somebody getting off of there, causing, you know, riot activities, have we updated, or have you looked at, or is it inclusive in our emergency response plan that we have, that we've gone over a couple of times? Has that been updated to kind of like add this into that, should something like that happen? Or are we already covered under that?
When we had, and Chief, maybe you can help me remember, when, during the pandemic, when a lot of our neighbors were having smash-and-grab robberies, there was, you know, protests, concerns about, you know, coming out on the train, we did a number of tabletops and scenarios for dealing with like a mob action or violent groups. And Chief, if you'd like to elaborate on that, but that is something that we had considered fairly recently.
Yeah, just to, just to, I believe if I'm correct, we had discussed that with staff right prior to this last Fourth of July event because we were very concerned.
That's correct. Yes. As you are aware, our emergency plan is very updated. Commander Rybaski did a really nice job working with Sam Hughes, and it was actually complimented actually by some of the other county agencies. So whether a riot would happen at a train station or it would happen elsewhere, we are well-prepared to handle that based on our policies and procedures, not only of the village emergency plan, but also too from our policies and procedures of the police department. And then also too, I know that Sam and Kyle have been in touch with our community partners, just looking for different type of resources or plans of action in case things have changed in regard to like, for instance, lodging and stuff like that. So we're very well-versed on what our plan would be in case they don't have tickets to get on the train or they don't want to leave. We would just work with our community partners over in DuPage County, King County, and Cook County to facilitate that.
If I'm not mistaken, during the pandemic, when we had the peaceful protest, a lot of businesses shut down. Home Depot closed, Jewel closed, BMO Bank closed. Most of the building, or most of the, and it was a peaceful protest, and we were very fortunate. But that wasn't what was going on at that time in Chicago and other places, which is why we reacted the way we did. I guess my, again, I'm going to the extreme, but if 50, 35-year-old men get off of a bus and start wreaking havoc, are we prepared for that?
I don't even think that's, not even, this ordinance doesn't cover that. That's...
Well, if you have a five-day notice, like we are proposing here, then we could be prepared for the worst-case scenario five days later. If it's a sudden drop-off and they don't adhere to the five days, then none of this is relevant.
I mean, I just look at this, and I'm like, if we pass an ordinance, are we willing to spend... to spend resources to defend it if we get sued?
We're going to spend resources if we're dropped off.
The city of Chicago, hundreds of thousands of dollars to defend their ordinance. So are we ready as a board to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to defend it? Or are we going to back down? What are you willing to do? That's, that's the question, I think.
In regards to that, trustee Hopkins, let me ask Kurt a question. Is there a lawsuit? Does any, any part of Chicago's structure warrant them to be sued for what they're doing, like their sanctuary city status? Does that have anything to do with it?
Yeah, because they receive money.
The lawsuit that I've seen is based more on just basic, this violates the Commerce Clause. You can't prevent people from going in and out of states like this. So I, you know, what the motives of the people that filed the lawsuit, can't say. Obviously there could have been other motives behind it. What the language says, it's just basically saying you can't prevent me from coming into your city based on the way the constitution is written.
Maybe, maybe we retool this ordinance and, and guide it toward the transportation people and say, there are not, we are not, you are not allowed to drop off any amount of people on an unscheduled stop or a scheduled stop without our approval. That would be directly at the transportation company.
So this, the way that we have it drafted now, it does aim directly at the bus company that's dropping it off unscheduled. We could try and look to tweak it as much as we can. I think any, any ordinance that we're going to be able to put in place is going to impact arguably interstate commerce, so I think we would still face that same risk. But we think this, at least this way, having a pre-approval process, that's more narrowly tailored to, you know, preventing those impacts on public health, safety, welfare.
I agree with that.
We're not saying they can't come.
Not saying they can't. We're saying you just have to get pre-approved.
I agree with that.
So we think that's why this is a more defensible position than a blanket ban. Because if you had a blanket ban, that's more likely to be challenged.
The reason Chicago's getting sued is because they received a ton of money from the government to be a sanctuary city and then they're saying that you can't drop off here. So that's part of the reason that people are suing them, you know, part of it. Not saying that we wouldn't be subject to it. You know, trustee Hopkins might have a valid point that we could, somebody could get, you know, pissed off enough to do it. But I think that the way it's written, the way I read it is doors open, just got to call ahead. That's how I read that.
Well, I think Paula described it correctly and I believe we need an ordinance, but I think you phrased it be proactive rather than reactive. So that being said, I couldn't describe it any better and that's exactly the way I feel. I think we should be proactive and not reactive. We need to have something.
And we are not saying no. We're just saying, you know, give us a five-day notice.
So this, this would apply if a bus of people were dropped off for a train pub crawl in Bartlett?
And technically, yes, if they didn't come, if it was more than 10...
We have to make sure that everything is enforced.
Yes, and we have some exceptions in there for school buses and for, you know, there's busing for disabled people, things of that nature. So we have some exceptions in there so that it doesn't encompass some of those more common busing situations that we would see. But it's, there are probably going to be some unintended consequences as there is with any type of ordinance.
But then so those people would be fined.
The bus company would be, the bus company would be.
Well, I think if they're going to drop off 100 people for a pub crawl in Bartlett, most of the businesses around the downtown Bartlett would pay the fine.
Good. But I think that becomes the question. Now you're discriminating.
Not voluntarily paying anybody's fines, not discriminating. I wonder where you're coming up with that?
Anyway.
I think...
More questions from the committee?
I don't think so, but it sounds to me like we should probably put something on the board meeting next time and, and vote on it. So we have something in the books.
Does everyone agree with that?
Yes, sounds good.
I'd like more information before.
Yeah, I would be a no because I'm not willing to sink my teeth in a $100,000 lawsuit because we have, I mean, we've had one bus drop off. It was peaceful. We have sidewalks to fix. We have so many other things to do besides to spend from a potential lawsuit from this. So that's just my stance on it.
Let's get it to the next board meeting is my...
There'll be no vote.
We can discuss it at the next board meeting too.
That's all we have on the licenses and ordinances tonight.
Thank you Chairman Hopkins. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
You're so moved.
Seconded by trustee Daney, seconded by trustee LaPorte. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Daney?
Yes.
Gansey?
Yes.
Housen?
Yes.
LaPorte?
Yes.
Swansky?
Okay.
We are adjourned.
Thank you, thank you.
No filibuster tonight.